Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Goshen Central School District being held on Monday, December 4th, at 2:00 PM, 6:30 PM, in the district administration building, times three via YouTube. Would everybody be ready for us? Yeah, cool. Next one. Do we have any? Signing? Yeah. Good. President's report. All has been quiet. There's not too much news to report on tonight. Hang on. Student representative is not here, so we'll go right to our legislative update.
Maybe one sec.
Excellent.
Yeah, I thought they were gonna have an updated this meeting, but. I'm actually excited about it. They're gonna go over AI, so it'll be interesting.
Great. We're hearing about that. Alright, and now on to board member committee reports. Besides policy, do we have any other committee reports? Not this time, okay. Quick update on policy. The policy committee we met a little bit a week last week. I want very large number of policies, or the general section. So this evening, we're going to be having a first read on public complaints, and then a first reading and readoption on following policies. School board has a new status, board number qualifications, school district officer and employee code of ethics, nomination and election of board officers, and duties of the president and vice president, duties of the treasurer, duties of the tax collector, district committees, citizens advisory committees, special meetings of the board, executive sessions, regular meetings, forum, rules of order. Um, or, or. Orienting. So it's one word because.
People wanted to say oriente.
Orienting and training board members, school board conferences, conventions, workshops. So we're gonna take a few minutes. Everybody has those in their pockets, so we'll take a little bit of time to recruit them. And even when everybody's, it'll be good. Thank you for bearing with us, everybody. As we're going through this, with this full policy over there, there was a lot of policies that we went through Wednesday. So this meeting and a few forthcoming meetings, we're going to try to really improve a good handful of these, so we're gonna be a few minutes. How's everybody doing?
Needs to play music. While you're on the phone.
Right. Did anybody have any comments that they'd like to discuss, or excuse me, one regarding any of those policies? Just report. Fantastic. Thank you again for your patience. Moving on to our next item, superintendent report.
Well, there's four items I wanted to bring to the board's attention that have us tonight. The first one being, December 18th, we'll be meeting with Education Management and Services Inc. to commence a special educational audit. The special education audit is designed to do a full analysis of our delivery service model in the district, how the district is functioning in terms of how we're servicing our students. As part of this, stakeholder groups will have an opportunity, after the board meets with the group on December 18th, to also meet directly with the consultant to be able to share opinions, be able to share their thoughts. And I want to bring this to the public's attention because as we know, there have been concerns brought to the board meetings board meetings over the past few weeks, and this will be an organized opportunity for stakeholders to be able to share those thoughts through this systematic evaluation of our special education process and the department. So again, the board will have an opportunity to meet with the auditors first on December 18th, and then we will establish a rollout on how we will be able to collect data and information, and establish time for stakeholders to be able to meet with them as well as they dig into the process. Wanted to give an update on school bus electrification. So I shared earlier with the board an update from Land Associates and Gerard Associates on our current electrical load service at the bus garage, and they basically presented us with two options. One being the simplest of, in the summarizing, a simple installation of a regular charger to be able simply to charge one bus. They believe that with some small minor modifications to the current power service, that it would easily be able to charge one sixty-six passenger bus. They've given us a rough cost of installation of approximately five to eight thousand, that is absent of the cost of the charger. Option two is a bit more of an upgrade, and there are some unanticipated costs. Slammer and I were just discussing. You'll see in the memo that I forwarded to the board that they talked about replacing pole mounted transformers. We don't know if that would be an additional cost passed on to the school district. And some of the further labor that would be required, they've estimated it to be around twenty to twenty-five thousand. If we did pursue that, it would allow us to install other rapid chargers as well. So at this point, based on what we have currently budgeted for this school year, we were thinking that it would likely be best to move forward with just the installation of a single charger at the bus garage. We did look into the possibility of looking at some of the service up at the high school, but there's some variables there as well, given that we don't really know something to load capacity when the cooling systems are running in the high school. So I just wanted to pause there for a moment to see if we're all in agreement, because then we could begin the process. But Slammer and I have some rough numbers. If you don't mind if I steal this for a minute. So, um, our rebate program that we pursue right now would offer us about a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar rebate on the bus. If we turn in an old decommissioned bus, they would give us back about sixty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for essentially a total credit of two hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. We need to go back to Leonard to just finalize the costs and make sure that we fully understand what's included and what's not. We want to make sure that the charger is in there. It's basically a soup to nuts if we're going to move forward with the purchase of one. But at this point, we thought it'd be best to pursue the single installation of one regular charger rather than trying to really look for those upgrades, that there's still a lot of existing questions between now and the end of the fiscal year, thinking that we might not be able to accomplish that, so just wanted to pause there for a minute.
Just a question. One charger was like a seven kilowatt, a real small charger?
I believe so, and that was the one, Lorene, you were on that call. Did they say about, um, it's about three hours to fully, or four hours to fully charge? Yeah.
They figured they could charge in four hours?
Three to four hours, I believe they said. Was that correct? And we can go back and verify that.
Yeah.
Seems wrong here. That seems a little off on a bus. I don't even know if you could do a car in that time.
We can go back and verify that. I wasn't on the call.
A standard home charger with like the two, two-twenty line, it takes like roughly twelve hours to charge a car, so. A supercharger, you'd be charging, you know, thirty minutes or so. I imagine the buses. The bu, it would surprise me if the fast charger was three hours for a bus.
Okay. We can go back and verify the charging time.
Yeah, that would concern me only because I don't, I don't think a standard charger would charge a bus in twenty-four hours. Might be counterproductive.
I agree.
Okay.
Six hours, sorry. I just found it.
Six hours.
Two hundred and ten kilowatt hours. They created to six homes, I think, the amount of energy that six houses would use.
That's for this, that's for the, this what I call slow charger?
Yes.
It's obviously pulling a lot different electric than slow charger for home, which makes sense, because that's why you had previously mentioned they had to upgrade the system for a home charger, you don't have to do that, so it's there is about what was impossible. That makes sense.
We can go back and verify all of that.
It also comes with software. They can charge it overnight when it's cheaper, when the rates are declined.
Okay. So we'll, we'll continue to research that. We're getting to the point where we are going to move where we'd like to be able to issue the purchase order. We have the funds available, as we had said in the budget process this year. The committee are intent to try to buy one. We just want to make sure we bring all the information, make sure order is in place before we proceed.
Can I just ask one more thing real quick?
Sure.
In the report that we received from Lan and Gerard, they were talking about the incoming service being provided from O and R to the garage panel, and the panel has the capacity to hold or provide, you know, more service than's incoming. Were there any further conversations with O and R to upgrade that incoming service to the existing panel?
We haven't had an opportunity to brief with them yet. We just have this laid on Friday, so we are anticipating work with Mr. Freeze to try to talk about this further to get more information such as that.
I think besides the charging analysis between the slow type one, type two, high speed, low speed chargers, and also seeing any options within that from O and R, without going beyond the capacity, but at least reaching the capacity of the existing panel, that would be great because then that would know we had open option to go high speed charger at the garage location as opposed to exploring the high school location.
Absolutely. We can find that out.
Great. Thank you.
So I also wanted to talk about a school lunch audit. So similar to the transportation audit that we completed, there are outside contractors that will come in to do a full analysis of the program. And one concept that Mr. Lamren has presented to me that we have been discussing is the concept of a school lunch audit. As we know, we currently use a shared service model for our management of our school lunch program. We employ a food service manager through Orange Osterprofes that is in district for three days a week, and then services two other districts at other parts of the week. All of our other staff are hired directly by the district. A school lunch audit would come in and look at menu options, staffing, options on the trays. They would look at an analysis of what we serve under the national school lunch program. They would do a full soup to nuts analysis of where we are, make recommendations for improvements, and also different efficiencies that we might be able to maximize on in the program. We have been in contact, Mr. Lamren has reached out to a few different districts for references locally that might be able to give us some feedback on programs that they have run and different providers that they have used for different audits. And something that would like to be able to put in front of the board for consideration to, uh, as we're at a turning point with the school lunch program, to see if there's some better options for us moving forward, or some more efficient options. So we hope at the next meeting on the eighteenth to have an option to put in front of you for consideration for improvement. Finally, I just wanted to give an update on the intermediate school living project. As you know, we had added a small amount of scope above the gymnasium and the penthouse on the gymnasium. So the project has been submitted to SED. On Friday, the twenty-fourth, we received an update looking for some clarification in terms of the submission. The first is being the funding source, so when we submitted what they call a form FPF, we had. So when we submitted what they call a form F P F, we had listed our total budget this year. As we remember, we left a transfer to capital line in the budget allocating in one year, one million dollars in transfer to capital, and then the second year, one million, one hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred dollars. They want the funding source identified specifically for the amount, not the total overall budget. That form's been corrected and already sent back to the state. And then they just asked for submission of our vote tally, just showing that both budgets were approved. All that information's been sent up to facilities planning in the state, and we're hoping to have that approval shortly after the first of the year. Pending that that gets approved shortly after the first of the year, we had talked to Land about the possibility of competitively bidding this rather than going with the omnia bid service, only because of the increased scope of work. We thought that we might be able to maximize better pricing, and if we're able to get our bids to the street a little bit earlier, i.e. somewhere around the February timeline, we should really truly be able to capitalize some competitive pricing to get the project done at G I S. I would anticipate that if we can award a bid in a short fashion by the spring, contractors are going to want to get in as early as possible so that they can have a longer season of taking on different jobs. They would only be here for one building. I'm sure they'd be able to be done in just a few short weeks, depending on what time they can get in the spring. So again, I just wanted to give that update. We have not yet received approval, but as this is only a small roofing project, we do anticipate that we should be getting that in, in short order. Good night, sir. Thank you very much.
Bye bye. Thank you, Dr. Pokes. Moving on to our next order of business, Assistant Superintendent for Business Report, Ms. Lorraine Van Houten-Lamren.
Thank you and good evening. I know with the last meeting you had asked if I could check on the C E P numbers to get an update for you. I did meet with our director of the school lunch program today, and we are level. We're still at the same that we were before, so we do not qualify for C E P as of this date. But he is going to continue monitoring that, and I'm keep you posted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now moving on to our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction Personnel and Technology Report, Jason Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. Good evening, everyone. So very pleased to inform the board and our community that we now have both seal of civic readiness and seal of bi literacy approved by the New York State Education Department. So I wanted to take a moment to go through the processes that our committees have gone through to organize these opportunities for our students. We spoke with Dr. Coats and Mr. Pantaleon earlier today. We fully intend to have our committee come to present to the board. So you'll be able to have that presentation, both presentations, in a very soon future board meeting. So our departmental leadership team at the high school, especially right now, the social studies department, went through a process that actually provides another four plus one pathway, graduation pathway for our students. We're very pleased that this pathway now, we're able to go retroactively and look for points to be earned for our current senior class to attain this, this seal, if you will, right? So not only will they have the opportunity to get the pathway for graduation, but they'll also be able to receive whatever it may be accorded or the stamp on their diploma. So it is a rather large process that began last spring, starting with our team attending in-person sessions at OU Bosie's with a team over the course of two days that really helped them to become more familiar and prepared to begin the process of developing our program. The first step here that we went through was to develop a readiness plan, so I can just pass this around real quick for you to look at. It just provides all the opportunities to earn the points that are necessary to go through the pathway. So if you take a look at that, you'll see out of the six points necessary you have there, how our students beginning in freshman year can begin to, to earn these points. Also, we have our civics projects that have been developed. We also have the Passport for Good that works to actually track the hours necessary to attain, for instance, the twenty-five hours and all of the points that go along with the seal. So I think our team did a very good job of putting this all together. We now have that pathway prepared. Students are actively earning the points necessary on our rubric to get that credential. We next have the seal of bi literacy. So this goes a little bit beyond just one department. You have members of the English Department, members of Foreign Languages Department, World Language Department, and also E and L teachers involved, and much the same, beginning in spring of twenty-three, attending professional development opportunities so that they're better prepared, more knowledgeable, and ready to put together the projects that are necessary. There was additional training that was necessary. So NICE had put on a series of eight webinars, and all of our teachers attended in preparation for the development of this path. The seal of bi literacy, it's really designed to recognize the students who have high proficiency levels in one or more languages outside of English. So reading, writing, speaking, reading, and they have to go through projects and of course, certain coursework to illustrate such proficiencies. So again, this year is another credential for our students, more recognition for our students, and I do believe that it sets them up for future success. We're very pleased with this, and we look forward to having our committees come here to present. And that's it for me this evening. Actually, I apologize, just wanted to mention that tomorrow begins our winter concert season, and that runs all the way through December twentieth. So C J Hooker begins tomorrow night with band, chorus, we look forward to that. It's going to be a great season here, holiday season, below performances. That's it for me. Thank you.
Right, thank you very much. Moving on, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. John and Ashley. We saw that the Board of Education hereby arranges for the special education programs and services based upon the recommendations made for students with disabilities by the Committee on Special Education during the period from November second, twenty twenty-three, through and including November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, and directs the district to arrange provisions of said special education programs and services to such students with disabilities as recommended during such time period by the Committee on Special Education. Resolve that the Board of Education hereby arranges for the special education programs and services based upon the recommendations made for preschool students with disabilities by the Committee on Preschool Special Education during the period from November eighth, twenty twenty-three, through and including November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and directs the district to arrange for the provisions of said special education programs and services to such students with disabilities as recommended during such time period by the Committee on Special Education. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the remainder of the consent agenda as presented. Favor?
Aye.
opposed? We don't have any old business, so moving on to new business, I need a motion to approve the minutes. Brett and Scott. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the minutes of the November twentieth, twenty twenty-three regular board meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion to approve overnight trips, wrestling team tournaments. John and Billy. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the following overnight trips for the wrestling teams to participate in the following tournaments. Haynes Memorial Tournament in Oswego, New York, from December twenty-eighth through thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Mustang Duels in West Winfield, New York, from January eighteenth through twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Be it further resolved that the Board reserves the right to cancel or reschedule any school sponsored trip or activity in the event of an emergency condition outside of the control of the school district in its sole discretion. Those in favor?
Aye.
So. I need a motion to accept donations and authorize an increased budget. And Ashley. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education accepts the following donations from Scottstown Avenue Elementary School P T O, twenty-six dollars and fifty cents to support the printing of flyers. Be it further resolved, the Board of Education approves increasing the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget to support the associated expenditures as shown below. All those in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to accept the annual fire inspection report and certificates of safety. John, Billy. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the public school fire safety reports as presented on December fourth, twenty twenty-three. It is noted that any non-conformances that were indicated at the time of inspection were corrected, and new certificates of occupancy have been issued. Additionally, it is noted that legal notice will be published at least once in newspapers of record, and that the fire departments with jurisdiction covering school facilities have also been notified and given access to inspection reports. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion to approve policy updates, renumbering first reading, and readoptions. I have Scott. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the renumbering, first reading, waves, second reading, and readoption of the policies noted earlier and as presented below. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Lorraine, did we receive any additional signups? No? Okay. Any further board member issues? Well, guys. Just have one quick comment in favor. We can add the, or the meetings to the Google Calendar for start times. That's possible.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks. All right, very good. Give motion, go into the next session. Mister Ball. Our education center including fifth session, we intend not to do a meeting in the meeting. Special related to, through a particular person or persons in collective bargaining negotiations. Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Good night.